We all sit around and think sometimes, "What's this all about?" The earth spins, the day fades to night, the sky blooms of old space outside. You question the things you see, try to make sense of this reality. Sometimes love will make you want to hide, but don't be afraid. It is just a ride. Fire comes to rock, goes up and down, it's only a shift of your life around. Now it's a slow play while you go on down. We go back and we cancel for a heart attack. It's just a ride. It's just a ride. It's just a ride. I dream of the day when we all wake up and look around and we all look up. We let the anger out of our heads and the blood out our eyes. Here we realise, it's just a ride. 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 It's just a ride.
Thank you very much, Eelsbury.
Cry for hell. Cry for war. Before. Look me in the eye, I'll tell you how I feel. Don't sit down or rather let you down. Oh, my words cut you down. Still swimming on those stones now. Come to the call of truth. Oh, it's a shadow of me, damn horse. Oh, trade in self denial. You're a god, but you're a trial. Look me in the eye, I'll tell you how I feel. Don't sit down or rather let you down. Oh, my words cut you down. Still swimming on those stones now. Come to the call of truth. Oh, it's a shadow of me, damn horse.
What can I say, man? Good afternoon. We're gonna do, uh, we're gonna do some of our own stuff that you've heard. Those first two songs, they're on our album, The Other Side. And we're gonna do a few covers for you. Some that have already been done this afternoon, and we're just gonna do them in a different style. This is a song called Purple Rain.
You're the poison when you bleed. You're the poison when you bleed. I wanna one time see you laugh there. Only want to see you laugh there, come on, purple rain. Purple rain, purple rain. Purple rain, purple rain. Purple rain, purple rain. Only want to see you laugh there, come on, purple rain. Honey, I never wanted to be your weekend lover. I wanna be some kind of friend. Baby, I can never steal you from another. Such a shame our friendship had to end. Purple rain, purple rain. Purple rain, purple rain. Purple rain, purple rain. Only want to see you laugh there, come on, purple rain. Honey, oh, how long times are changing. Sorry, step to something new, that means you too. So I need you, yet I soon I made you mine. Think you better go to, let me guide you through the purple rain. Purple rain, purple rain. Purple rain, purple rain. Purple rain, purple rain. Only want to see you on the hate of purple rain.
Thank you. If you like what you hear this afternoon and you, uh, you wanna get one of our CDs or, uh, or even one of our t-shirts, we have got some merch just over there in that tent. You're welcome to go and check it out. You might even be there after the show, I'm not quite sure. This is a song off our acoustic album, well, at least it's acoustic form. If you want it in its electric form, it's on our, our debut album, Self-Aware, and this is a song called Stone. Ready?
I forgot four hundred miles. Four hundred miles. Cause my breaks shows I'm alive, I'm alive. Brothers' life was made so distant, prison of a broken system. I'm a constant indiscretion. I am true to painful lesson. Watch me come on the wall. Feed the worst in me. Feel the hurt I fail. Know the pain in me. See what lies beneath. I'm a constant indiscretion. I'm a restless solid road. I have acquired resignation. Nature set in stone. I lay here alone with time, alone with time. Cause dreams linger, stir my mind, stir my mind. Ask me where the lies will lead, before what the truth appears. I have acquired resignation. I am raging silent aggression. Watch me come on the wall. Feed the worst in me. Feel the hurt I fail. Know the pain in me. See what lies beneath. I'm a constant indiscretion. I'm a restless solid road. I have acquired resignation. Nature set in stone. Feed the worst in me. Feel the hurt I fail. Know the pain in me. See what lies beneath. I'm a constant indiscretion. I'm a restless solid road. I have acquired resignation. Nature set in stone.
Thank you. Now time for another cover. Yeah, another one, coincidentally, someone played already this afternoon, but it's in a different style. They played it in the style of Ataris. We'll play it in the style of, um, some Norwegian dudes. This is Boys of Summer.
Nobody on the road, nobody on the beach. I feel it in the air, something's out of reach. In this street, empty lane, the sun goes down alone. I'm driving by your house, oh, I know that you're not home. I can see you, red skin shining in my soul. You got your hair going back to those sunglasses on baby. I can tell you my love for you will still be strong. Every true boy is a son who has gone. Never will forget those nights, oh, I really lost a dream. Remember how you made me crazy? Remember how I made you scream? Now I don't understand what happens to our love. But baby, I'm gonna get you back, gonna show you why I'm here. And I can see you, red skin shining in my soul. You got your walking shoes on, smiling with everyone. I can tell you my love for you will still be strong. Every true boy is a son who has gone. Hold on my road today, I saw a dead head sticking on the Cadillac. Little boy sits inside my head, says, "Don't look back, you can never look back." But I knew what love was, what did I know? Those days are gone forever, I should just let them go. I can see you, red skin shining in my soul. You got the time to be back, baby, oh, baby. I can tell you my love for you will still be strong. Every true boy is a son who has gone. I can see you, red skin shining in my soul. You got your hair swinging back to those great fears on baby. I can tell you my love for you will still be strong. Every true boy is a son who has gone.
Thank you very much. We're gonna head back to do another original from our recent, uh, acoustic album release, The Other Side. This next one's called Too Close, and from all of us, I'd like to wish our lead singer and frontman Henrik a happy birthday. Because it's his birthday today. And
Thank you.
Rather than go down the pub, he decided to come here and spend time with us. And if you do like what you hear, we've got a merch stand you can buy, CDs and stuff and all those kind of things. So, and come and, come and see us after the gig, so, this one's Too Close.
Two sides to every door. You're the quiet, I'm the noise. Find lots of love and hate. Bless your souls and seeds for tomorrow's pay. Break the cycles, find a balance in this great divide. Lift the law through the show me both sides. Waited down my dead eyes. Caved in lows before we both met at arms. Came to the Day two. You want a lot except your dog. If the truth is ever lie closed off. Black and white and the absolute. Time has died since the light breaks through. There are times I am conscious of my own demise. There are times when I fight just to survive. Come out in thorns, worth the battle, yet no one knows where the edge is there. You move too close. I am too close. Move too close. Too close.
Thank you. Right, it's gonna move to the piano. Exciting times. Has anybody seen us before? Uh, Ten, maybe? It's nice to see you. This is, um... If you do get our CD, "The Other Side", you'll find some slightly different versions of the songs that we do electrically. And this is our version of a song called "My Bad".
Across the line, it came for the fire across all. Again we try to reignite the forest force. If it all comes out, we could never take it back. Let us down, leave us down. One more step in the wrong direction. Till it all comes crashing down. Yeah, the lights of darkest times in the show. In the night, this needed sign, but you can't be told. If it all comes out, we could never take it back. Let us down, leave us down. One more step in the wrong direction. Till it all comes crashing down. Till it all comes crashing down.
Thank you. That's a song called "My Bad", it's on a CD over there. Not one, there's more than one CD. There's enough for some of you. Okay, we're gonna do a last cover. I'm sure you'll all know this one.
You shout it out, but I can't hear a word you say. I'm talking loud, not saying much. I'm criticized, but all your bullets ricochet. Shoot me down, but I get up. I'm bulletproof, nothing to lose. Far away, far away. Ricochet, you take your aim. Far away, far away. Shoot me down, but I won't go. I am titanium. Shoot me down, but I won't go. I am titanium. Come me down, but it's your rule how further to fall. Goes down on a love. Raise your voice, you stick to the stones, may break my bones. I'm talking loud, not saying much. I'm bulletproof, nothing to lose. Far away, far away. Ricochet, you take your aim. Far away, far away. Shoot me down, but I won't go. I am titanium. Shoot me down, but I won't go. I am titanium. I am titanium. I am titanium. Stone heart, machine guns, fire the ones who run. Stone heart, not bulletproof. Shoot me down, but I won't go. I am titanium. Shoot me down, but I won't go. I am titanium. Shoot me down, but I won't go. I am titanium. Shoot me down, but I won't go. I am titanium.
So we've got time for one more, which I'm gonna head back to the piano for this one. Just to say, this song is very important to someone in the crowd. So, Lorraine, I know you love this song. This is dedication for you. It's "Only Way Out".
Oh, oh. The only way I hope. You're the only way I hope. Oh, oh. Oh, oh. The only way I hope. You're the only way I hope. Oh, oh. The only truth except the lies is gone. Still I live in the night. The whisper of empty eyes. Turning the light of my eyes. Openly a letter there. The walls of times let me share. A child to heal myself again. But his lust keeps on throwing on me. Oh, oh. The only way I hope. You're the only way I hope. Oh, oh. Oh, oh. The only way I hope. You're the only way I hope. Oh, oh. All the years that passed me by, I know all the roses and sun. I've left the flowers to fill my mouth. We just hope that you are behind. Now I know I changed my mind. The rest, oh, I realize. But only I can change my life. There's just one piece I'm left to find. Oh, oh. The only way I hope. You're the only way I hope. Oh, oh. Oh, oh. The only way I hope. You're the only way I hope. Oh, oh.
Thank you very much. If you want some of our music, you can find it in the merch tent. Have a great day. Ladies and gentlemen, give it up one more time. A fabulous band playing here at Live in the Park 2021. Take a bow, guys. They are Empire.